I'm going to call this roundtable meeting to order here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. We start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. O'Brien is absent today, and we do not have remote electronic attendance, so we will move to roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian. Moyer.
Present.
O'Briens absent. Alderman Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Okay. Under questions on the agenda, we are pulling items 10.5 Council Bill 3025 and 10.6 Council Bill 3026, and per our notice that they will be pulled to next week, 27, because this is a roundtable. Anything further? Then we move to our roundtable discussion. Enterprise Fund Finances, 8.1. Turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you. We're going to present some information tonight about our enterprise funds. If you remember, a month ago or so, we presented information on fees associated with the municipal operations, and then we held in, held back the actual rates and fees associated with the enterprises, and so myself, Finance Director Carol Barnes, and Mike Doey, Public Works Director, will make this presentation. We also have, at the end of our slideshow, JP Jolly. He's from Muniworth. They're the software firm that is, does the financial modeling for us, and he'll step us through the process by which we develop the financial models for the four individual enterprises. Okay, Jared. Okay. So, the enterprises consist of our Water Pollution Control Fund, or the Sewer Fund, the Stormwater Fund, which really is still somewhat in its infancy. It was created back in 2002. The Water Fund, which is also like the Water Pollution Control Fund, a mature fund. And then the Sanitation Fund, also somewhat immature. It is still being subsidized, as you're going to find out tonight. And just to be clear, the enterprises are those funds that are kept and accounted for by our finance office separately, and the funds are, the revenues and expenses are segregated from all other city finance, financial activities. So, starting off with our Water Pollution Control Fund, we, the last time we did a rate study was in 2013, and that study was done in advance of pending improvements that were proposed for our North Slope wastewater treatment plant. They were done as a requirement to secure a low-interest loan for those improvements at the treatment plant. One of the important things to note about the rate study that was done in 2013 was that it didn't take into consideration any changes or adjustments to the rates to our wholesale customers. So, the WPC utility has different categories of users, which I'm going to come to, but one of them is the wholesale users. Those are, those municipal dischargers that, in East Moline and Old Valley, that discharge to our regional South Slope wastewater treatment plant. So, those regional dischargers haven't seen an increase since 2009, while the inside Moline customers have had a series, had a series of increases over five years, starting in 2013. So, here is the customer breakdown for the sewer utility. You can see that at the top there, we have those wholesale customers. And technically, the water plant itself, the drinking water plant, is in a customer class by itself in addition to those regional customers. And then we have the residential customers. The residential customers in our billing system are grouped together with the commercial customers that are, that are non, what we call the non-strength commercial customers. And then we have the surcharged customers that are listed below S2, S3, S4, S5, and S6. Those are, those customers that discharge wastewater to our collection system and to our treatment works that are, have a higher loading, and they give us more trouble at the, create more workforce at the, at the treatment works to, to clean that water. So, so we, we prepared a, a facilities plan. If you recall, we had a new permit issued to us for the South Slope plant, and that permit included a new discharge limit for phosphorus. We can't, and currently are not, meeting that limit. We had a facilities plan initiated and was conducted. We presented those findings to you earlier this year, that, the recommendation of which was to make improvements to the treatment plant on the order of about $70 million. This, this study that we're under, that we're working through now is the, is to determine how to fund those $70 million worth of improvements, especially considering that the previous rate study that was done in 2013 had some special conditions associated with it, and how the increases were distributed to the customer classes. So, we want to, this, this partnership that we've created with Waterworth or Muniworth, and you're going to meet JP here in a second, and he's going to step you through the financial modeling process, but we've worked through this subscription service to this software tool, and we found that it's a really excellent tool, and I think you're going to find the same thing as JP works through the finances for your four enterprises. But one of the things that we want to take a look at specifically, as we undertook this endeavor with Waterworth, was to specifically look at those retail outside customers. Remember that three or four months ago, we were talking here in this, in this room, and there was a question that came up about those outside retail customers. The customers that are outside are corporate limits, but that are connected to our, our city sewer or water system. And currently, the ordinance calls for those customers to pay 110% of the inside rate. And nobody really knew the rationale behind how that was formulated. And so, that was one of the things we wanted to undertake, and then the other was to develop a fair and equitable rate for those, those regional customers. So, we, we've conducted this analysis, and we're going to step through some of the process. I, I'll tell you that we've, we've test-driven this presentation with a few of you already, so some of you have already seen this, so it's not going to be any surprise to you. But we're proposing to increase the wholesale customers, starting in 2023, with a 25% increase and an additional 25% increase in 2024. We also propose to increase the, the Moline customers, starting in 2024, as well as then increases to both classes through 2031, either at a rate of 9% or 4%. You'll see, when JP dives into the model, that it'll be much more, it'll make much more sense, because it'll be visual to you. The other thing that you'll see is that we're going to propose an increase to the, that outside retail rate to, to match the water rate, to be 200% of the, the inside rate. So, the result of those findings are shown here below. The green highlighted sections there are, the rows show the years, and then the actual rates that we would charge for the customers. The commodity rate for the inside customers is above, and the commodity rate for the, the regional discharger, dischargers is below. You can see that the regional dischargers is quite a bit lower, and the rationale behind that is, we call them wholesalers, because we, as Molineers, discharge to that system, and we're charged by the amount of water that comes into the house. So, after the water goes through our water meter, we run it through the laundry, or through our shower, or whatever. It goes down the drain. We're only paying for the amount of water that goes through the meter. So, any, any water that leaks into the sewer system after that meter, the individual Moline customers don't have to pay for. We have to pay, but they're not paying through their invoice directly. Whereas the wholesalers, there's one meter that sits at the border, and they pay based on the aggregate amount that goes through there, including all the INI. It's called infiltration and inflow that comes into that, into that meter, and into our system. And then, so each, each, there's two components to the utility bill for the wastewater. One is the commodity rate, and we're, we charge by 1,000 gallon increments. And then, then there's the fixed charge, or the base charge. I think on your bill, it might be called the capacity charge. That is the, the charge of $31.23 currently, and then we're proposing to increase both the commodity rate and the fixed rate, or the capacity charge, at the same percentages that we're recommending. So, you can see there, down below, the, the rates for the wholesalers are shown in red. The lines, the rate increase up above was supposed to be red, and that didn't get changed. So, you can see those also. So, according to what we're presenting, and we're not, to be clear, we're not asking for anything, any action from you here tonight. We're really just going to be looking for a consensus from you on wastewater, to move, to bring back a, an increase to our wholesalers and to the outside retail. This is where, if we did enact the increases that we're proposing, where our customers would fall in with the neighboring communities. And, and it is a little bit confusing. Initially, we had this slide lined up differently, and then Greg Paus convinced me to change it, because the other, all of the other neighboring communities use cubic feet. And I told the other aldermen that I think it's a conspiracy, because I think they're, they do that just to confuse people. But that's typically what engineers do. They, they do, they deal in. So, you can see there, that really what you want to look at is the bottom line there. That's the accumulation of the, the commodity sale, as well as the fixed charge, and this is on a monthly basis. So, you know, currently, we're billing on a quarterly basis, so this is, would be on a monthly basis, and our average customer uses about 4,000 gallons a month. So, one of the things that we need to take into consideration regarding these increases, and our financial model in general, is that if we, if we desire to go after a state revolving loan, the loan funds from the Illinois EPA Fund, then we have to enact a, we have to present to them a financial model that shows that we're solvent, and that we're, we have the money to pay our, pay our debts. And, and then we have to have those increases that, that make us solvent codified, before we would receive the first, first dispersment. So, here is the history of sewer rate increases, and so it's important to see then, if you zero in on the row that, that calls out 2010, you'll see that there were increases from 2010, 2011, and 2012, and then starting again in 2014. That was the rate, the rate study from 2013, so five years. So, really, a total of eight years of increases that the inside customers have had, without any increases to the wholesale customers. So, you can see down below, the, the proposed in red, and then at the bottom, what the, what that would mean to our revenue and the sewer fund.
Can you go back two slides? Uh, one more, sorry.
One more?
Yeah. So, for the Moline on the right-hand side.
Oh, we never did fix that.
Well, no, we had talked about the Rock Island, but then I looked at the Moline, and it, it has a fixed fee. It goes up from 23 to 24, but doesn't go up for either the rate or the fixed in 2025?
You are correct. That is an error. That, that didn't, that needs, that's not correct.
Okay.
It should have been a 9% increase, there from 24 to 25.
And we don't know if Davenport's done anything in the future, or the, they've only set through 24, right?
Davenport has only set through 24.
Okay, so, okay.
All right, thank you. But, but when Greg was researching these rates, we did find that all of the communities have active rate adjustments. They're underway. Okay, so, so then we move on to stormwater, and the stormwater customer classes are broken down by residential and commercial. If you have a residential property, it's either going to be small, medium, or large. And those are based on the acreage. So, if you're less than a quarter acre, you're a small. If you're between a quarter and a half, you're a medium, and if you're between half and two acres, then you're a large. Those are the current rates shown on the screen there. And then, commercial is very, very complicated, because we have a formula that calculates the rate, or the acreage, and multiplies it by a fixed amount of $87.83. But we have a formula that, that takes into consideration some of the pervious acreage and some of the impervious acreage. And so, we actually have those calculations built into Carol's billing system. And so, the, the commercial properties, and we'll show you one, a couple of them, pay based on hard calculations, based on the impervious and the pervious ratio on the property.
In the neighboring communities, is small, medium, large, do they have the exact same regime? Because ours always, I always felt ours was a little bit weird, that if you had two acres and, two acres and five square feet, you paid double than somebody who had 1.99 acres.
Yeah, so, so for the small, East Moline is just like us. Rock Island is like, little, it's about two-thirds of the size of ours. So, you have to be a really small parcel in Rock Island to be a small. And then, you know, Rock, theirs are, theirs are in square feet, rather than acres. But there, Rock Island's is different, whereas ours and East Moline are the same.
And they're hard, fast number.
Yep, exactly.
You hit this number, and you're over.
Yep. One of the things that we presented to you last week, when Carol and David presented the CIP, was that for stormwater, the, the CIP that we presented you last week includes rate increases that are proposed here. So, any changes that we make, and again, we're not asking for any action here tonight. We're really looking for just some consensus or direction on where to, what to bring back. But, but just remember that the, the proposed CIP includes the rate increases that we're proposing. The one thing I would also say is that stormwater is largely dependent, the stormwater capital spending is largely dependent on which streets are selected. And, and an example of that is that when 36th Avenue Court, east of 53rd Street, was, was chosen for reconstruction, the, the stormwater system at that location had to be reconstructed also. So, Andy, that manages our stormwater utility, he doesn't, you know, he didn't really have any say-so, and he didn't have any, you know, some of the projects that he wanted to get done, you know, then go to the back burner. So, we just really don't have the, the funding in stormwater to fund actual improvements that are, that are important to the stormwater utility itself. So, Bob also has a strategic goal for us to complete a stormwater master plan next year, and so, really, we have that in the budget, and we, Andy is actually working to develop an RFP now, to select an engineer to help us with that. But that, once that plan is complete, then, we feel like we'll be able to bring back real good data to you to, to tell us how much we should be spending on staff, how much we should be spending on preventative maintenance, capital improvements, so on, so forth. This, this slide, I hope it didn't confuse you when you, when you saw this in advance, but this is really just Andy's wish list. He had developed this, this sheet and slotted these projects. These are kind of his wish list projects into different years. And then, once the CIP was developed and different streets were selected, he had to kind of scrap. But we threw this slide in, because we wanted you to get a feel for, there's real, real work out there that we want to get done, that we really just don't have the funding for. So, if we were to enact the 2.30% increases that we're proposing in 2023 and 24, and then an additional 2% increase in '25, those are the rates that, that make the cash flows work for, for, for stormwater, and ensure that it meets the minimum reserve threshold, or, you know, the minimum, you know, complies with the minimum reserve policy. But you can see that those increases in, in, for 67% of our customers, which are the small, small residential customers, they would see about a 58, 58 cent increase per month the first year in 2023, and then an additional 76 cent increase in 2024, and then 7 cents in 2024.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
And typically, Tony, you could smooth out those increases. I mean, to the average person, it's going to look odd for a 30, a 30, and then just a 2. You could smooth those out if you wanted. I realize it affects your cash flow, but just when you look at that on paper, a 30, a 30, oh, maybe we need a 2. Might be better to smooth it out.
Yes, and you'll see that we have a, when JP does his thing, you'll see that he has a scenario that shows that. And then, if you look down the line through the mediums and larges, and then the commercial, you can see it's there at the, the bottom left, that the commercial represent 11% of our customers, but 56% of the revenue. Over on the right table shows the comparison between the communities, and it is a little, especially for the, the measured, for the commercial properties, it's a little more difficult to compare, because, especially because East Moline and Rock Island do not charge for the impervious, or I'm sorry, for the pervious portion of the commercial property. So, here's an example that Andy created, and these two properties are right next to each other. But this is the Quad Cities Christian School, which is south of John Deere Road, right, right down from the, where the Target store is. And, and so you can see that, the one on the left I'm talking about, it is largely impervious, or pervious. It's largely pervious. And, and so the current rate, or I'm sorry, the rate proposed after the two increases are in effect would be, the, the charge would be $47.90 a month. You can see what, if they, if this lot were in East Moline or in Rock Island, what those charges would be. I'm sorry. That's the current rate. The Moline current rate is 47. The proposed rate would be 78.17 after the second increase would be in effect. And then, on the contrast, this is the Hobby Lobby store that is largely impervious. And, and so you can see the current rate is 2.2689, and the proposed rate is 3.8223. And so, you can see it's quite, that 3.8223 is quite a bit under the, what they would be paying in East Moline or Rock Island.
Mr. Schmidt.
What is the value of charging for that pervious space, as opposed to the impervious? I, I get why we do it at a lesser rate, but would it make sense to not include it in that consideration? Is it enough of a contribution to the storm system, I guess, to say, like, it goes all the way out if it's the right kind of surface?
I think it would simplify things if we did it the way Rock Island and East Moline did. The rationale is that if you have a one-acre piece of land, and, and on the, on the pervious part, 100 drops of rainfall, in theory, 15 of those drops are going to run off and have to go into the storm system. But the, the impervious part, 95 of those raindrops out of 100, so that's where the formula comes in. And, and I think part of this is because Moline was the very, one of the first, if not the first, the first stormwater utility, and I think that part of it was so that it was legally defensible.
Because I, I just, I ask in part because it appears we are punishing a property for being more pervious, compared to how our neighbors are doing that rate.
If we did it the way the neighbors did, it would incentivize people to improve their property from a stormwater standpoint.
Which is the goal.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, what, what are their incentives at the moment? I don't think so, to create more pervious, impervious. Like, you know, like, the alternative parking lot, you know, substances and things, we're not even close to that with this funding formula, correct?
No, they would still be charged. We would go out and re-measure, and, but they would still be charged for some of that, some of that, that impervious.
So, even if they made, even if they made an improvement, an eco-friendly improvement to their parking situation, they would, what I'm saying is that, the way we have it structured is, there's no incentive to do that. Or is there? Am I misunderstanding?
It's not a substantial improvement.
Correct, okay.
And one of the things, Your Honor, is that we intend to bring back a change that would be tied to the landscape requirements of the zoning code.
Okay.
And we've been working with Ryan and Sean on that, that, that would either require those landscape improvements to be qualitative from a stormwater standpoint, or, or that they would be in addition to the, you know, some qualitative stormwater. But we really want to do that in, in conjunction with changes to the zoning code.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Mr. Went. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Beattie.
Typically, those end up being credits applied against the formula to determine what your rate is for your property. And that then enhances the landscaping throughout the city.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. As we discussed, I, I think that this fund, probably more than the others right now, is underfunded, and, and I agree with it. There needs to be something. It hasn't kept up with what it, what it should. But to your point, I mean, we've been talking about this for a number of years, trying to get, you know, incentives in place, or requirements for improvements. I'll use, the easiest example is Kickserve on the corner of 7th and 19th. It was an asphalt parking lot that they purchased. And our code right now, as long as they didn't make it worse, they could do whatever they wanted on it. It is impossible to have made it worse, since it was just an asphalt parking lot. And so, we need to have within our code, and I think this is what Tony was talking about, is some requirements that when you are rehabilitating a building, or, or redoing a lot, or something like that, that you actually make it better. Now, at some point, there's just, needs to be that requirement. If you go beyond that minimum requirement, then we can have incentives and reduce the, your, your pitch-in, whatever that thing is, because that helps the entire system. These incremental steps are what's going to actually save the system. But we've got some other things in here. I mean, in our list of wish lists, there's $200,000 line items for dredging ditches, 16th Street moat and 60th Street. And we've been talking about that for seven years, that the, our ordinance says the neighboring property owner is responsible for it. But we just, year after year, and it's been hundreds of thousands of dollars since I've been on council, that the city just goes and takes care of it. We need to enforce our ordinances, because that would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars still in the stormwater fund that could have been used for, for all of these other things. And into the future, that's $200,000 that could be used for other things. So, it is easy to raise rates. It is hard to govern and enforce ordinances and, and do those things, or come up with ordinances and pass them. But from my standpoint, we have to get our house in order before we're starting to raise rates by 30% on people. I know the number winds up being a small number, because it's 30% of a smaller number if you're a small lot. But those all add up. And we've talked about, in our meetings, you know, it winds up being 160 bucks a year, between this and all these other increases. We need to get our house in order. I'm not opposed to doing this, especially for stormwater. Like I said, it, it, it needs it. But from my standpoint, we've got to get these other things in order, because I can't go to residents and say, we're increasing these things, but we haven't actually fixed the known issues in our code right now. So, we're just going to charge it.
Thank you. Thank you. What's next? What's next?
Okay, so here's the history of stormwater changes. So the this utility was created in two thousand one, I think I said two thousand two before. And then there was an increase in two thousand five, and then there really hasn't been anything since. You can see there on the bottom of that slide what the additional revenue, what additional revenue would be generated with the two thirty percent increases and then the two percent increase. Okay, so then moving on to drinking water, really two things related to drinking water. One is that there is some substantial debt associated with the water plant construction that is going to retire in two thousand twenty four, and we'll celebrate that. And then the second thing is is Carol has kind of worked her magic with the cash flows for the water utility, and it is it's solvent, and it's going to be in good shape all the way until two thousand twenty five, and we'll show you a model that that indicates that. But we are proposing a seven percent increase in in two thousand twenty five. Again, we're not asking for any action relating to this tonight, and and a lot of things could change between now and two thousand twenty five. So we're just really kind of presenting you this as kind of informational purposes.
And I might just I might just add one comment, that we were very pleased that we were able to pay cash for that line to Silvis, the one one million five, was it five five eight or five eighty eight? So.
Okay, so here's the history of water rate increases. There were three years of increases in two thousand twelve through two thousand fourteen. And then we're proposing nothing in twenty three, nothing in twenty four, and then a an increase in twenty five. And then we have some some scenarios to show you in the financial model that that will incorporate some of the ideas we had when we met with you with some of you aldermen individually. So Mike is now going to talk about sanitation.
Okay, the sanitation fund collects fees for the following services, which are the residential refuse, the residential recycling collection, brush collection, lawn yard waste bag collection, lawn yard waste cart collection, and bulky solid waste collection. So to let you know where we stand right now, for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty two, a loan from the general fund of five hundred thousand dollars was required for the sanitation fund to balance. So we need to do something with the sanitation fund if we want it to to stay in balance. Cash flow analysis indicates a thirteen percent increase in overall revenue required for the fiscal year two thousand twenty three budget, and a minimum of one point five percent increases to twenty four and twenty five budgets. We also have JP, who's going to present a three-year equal increases to to give you a different option to look at. And just to let you know, the last rate increases for residential refuse wasn't was two thousand fourteen, and in two thousand eighteen with the residential recycling last rate increase. So the our rate recommendations are to increase two thousand twenty three rate for residential refuse collection from nine dollars and forty two cents a month to eleven dollars and twelve cents, increase it in two thousand twenty four from eleven twelve per month to eleven dollars and thirty five cents, and then increase it again in two thousand twenty five from eleven dollars and thirty five cents per month to eleven fifty seven. So no rates in no increases in the recycling rates are proposed, and right now that is three dollars and sixty nine cents per month. So the overall rates, including the residential refuse and recycling, would be fourteen dollars and eighty one cents per month in twenty twenty three, fifteen dollars and four cents per month in two thousand twenty four, and then fifteen dollars and twenty six cents per month in two thousand twenty five. So that you had a comparison of the charges by other communities. We have East Moline, Rock Island, Davenport, Bettendorf, and all of those rates are higher than what Moline currently charges. So we are currently at thirteen dollars and eleven cents per month. So some of those are significantly higher. So our proposed rate for two thousand twenty three, as you can see, still keeps us as lowest rate of all the nearby neighboring communities. Even in two thousand twenty four, we're still the lowest, and we don't have a figure from Rock Island or Bettendorf in two thousand twenty four.
Mr. Wang, and then.
Yeah, but but as we talked about, these aren't exactly apples to apples comparisons.
It's apples to apples.
Yeah, it it it's, I mean, you know, and in Davenport, I think that that's all in with recycling. And Bettendorf, you get bulk pickup every month as much as you want. I mean, so there's, we're not exactly comparing the same services between communities. And we had talked about, I thought we were going to reference that in that chart, but I just thought it was important to say that.
Well, and the other thing to also remember is that Moline is the only one in this in these charts that does the leaf pickup, leaf collection, and that is a very large expense that we do for our residents.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron, you have something?
No, I'm as apples and apples, because we separately charge for other things, both trees, everything. And in some of those other cities, those are incorporated into their rates. So you, like Mike said, you have to be careful of apples and apples here. That was gonna be my comment.
Okay, so the sanitation fund rate recommendations for paid brush collection are to institute a thirty dollar fee for up to the first two and one half cubic yards of volume, and a forty dollar fee for each additional two and one half cubic volume. Now, where we get this number from is basically a small pickup truck, or if you would sit two regular refrigerators side by side, and there was nothing in them, those are approximately the the volume amounts that we're charging. So then we would institute a requirement that the brush be cut to lengths not to exceed six feet, and that's because those are easier to handle and to dispose of those.
Mr. Waldron has a question.
Not a question, more of a opinion statement. I don't have any issue with number one, I have more of an issue with number two. A tree falls on your property, you cut it up. Getting it to six foot lengths is incredibly difficult when you've got to cut down an entire tree and put it out in your curb. We took a look at this many, many years ago, and what we found is that people just want to get that brush cleaned up as quick as possible, they drag it out to the curb, the brush truck comes along, the grapple picks it up, puts it in, goes. And so we never instituted that six foot in six foot thing, because it was problematic to do. I think you need to look at that. I mean, we we considered it way back when, but we just could not get the homeowners to grasp cutting up all that tree into six foot lengths.
Thank you. Mr. Schick has a additional comment.
Something that's that's changed in recent decades and last year is we're now required to bring it to the facility and add a six foot length. So that's that's part of the reason for that requirement. So somebody now has to do that, you know, while they're taking entire trees, dropping off and cut up.
Well, haven't we always cut the trees up, though, either the homeowners or us?
No, we we put in the days we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wang.
And to the I I agree, but it may then be something where there's some kind of surcharge, because because I agree, I mean, there's some people who don't have the ability to do it, or don't have the time, or whatever, but might say, I'll pull it out there, and I'll pay an extra hundred bucks if you cut it up into six feet, you know? Because the alternative is, they then have to hire a tree service or somebody to come and cut it up and haul it away, or or something like that. So if if that's the issue, and if if that's our concern, then maybe we have a two A that says, in the event you don't bring it to to six feet, then there'll be some kind of surcharge for it.
Mr. Waldron.
Listening to Mr. Schick explain that makes me feel better to a certain extent. A lot of times what happens is we have a tree go down, the private tree company comes and takes it, and it's much cheaper for the city to haul it away, so the tree company brings it to the curb and says, call the city, that's only going to cost you forty dollars. And but if I'm going to charge you, it's going to be a hundred and forty dollars. So let's take it to the curb. And they didn't care about the six foot lengths then, they just threw it out there to the curb, it was the city's problem. So that may help with that problem, too. So I feel more comfortable in that regard.
And and to that point, it may be like, hey, if you're going to do this, you have to pay the tree company to put it in six foot lengths, that might cost you an extra fifty bucks.
Correct.
Or you can pay us a hundred bucks, and we'll do it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, this rate requirement structure isn't anticipated to impact revenues, but will reduce the city costs associated with this service. And that's because you see the front yards that are filled with with debris, and the city comes by and picks it up for, I believe, a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty dollars. So we, this would be another thing where where our costs actually aren't included in this as well, where we're really spending a lot more money than we'll be taking for Okay, the bulky waste collection, we are recommending basically the same as the the yard waste, and that's with a thirty dollar fee upfront for the first two and one half cubic yards of volume, not to exceed one hundred pounds, and then a forty dollar fee for each additional two and one half cubic yards. This rate requirement will reduce the subsidy from a hundred and sixty four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, to eighty two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
Mr. Waldron.
Is this eliminating the first free one?
Yes.
And the reason I the reason I'm going to do is because that's a particularly good thing. I it's a good service we offer to our our residents. Pull your stuff out there one time a year, we'll take it away for you. It's difficult for them to put it all in their trash, it's expensive to call one eight hundred junk. What I have always felt is that the second one, especially related because of landlords and property owners that take advantage of us, that second one should be a lot higher than it is than that first one. But I kind of like giving the residents that first free one, personally.
Yes, Mr. Wang.
Yeah, I I think I would prefer now, I I think that we're kind of crazy of saying, bring everything you want and fill the entire thing, and and you get that as your free one. So I I'd like to say, yes, you get a free one, and maybe it's five cubic, you know, something reasonable, and then charge after that, because, you know, I I had a guy who was buying a rental in in Moline, and part of the thing was, he was buying this house, but he had to take everything out, because the person had gone to a nursing home. And he said, well, I'm gonna have to get the dumpster, da 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 da, and then somebody who else in the conversation was, said, well, no, Moline, you can, you just kind of do it all in like one day or one weekend, and you can take this entire house full of everything and just put it on the curb, and they will take it all. You get, that's your free one for the year. And and if it happens to be the second one, it's only forty bucks. And so I I'm all down for the 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 free, but I think there has to be some parameters on it, because otherwise they should just get a dumpster and and pay for it.
And and our current city code, I believe, is two cubic yards.
Yeah.
And after, I think the council had said earlier at a different session, that we that we should enforce the code. So the if we do that, then we would only pick up two cubic yards. And we've also received a number of complaints from people who do the same thing, that the whole front yard of their property is filled with debris, and then we get complaints from the neighbors and and other things as well. So so we've been trying to walk a fine line there on 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 how to do that. But the I believe that if we would stick with the two point five cubic yard limit and and do some public notification of that, and and if we stay with that, then I think we'll it will help the department and the funding as well, in that we're not losing so much money whenever we pick these up.
Thank you. What's next?
So the revenue increases from the recommendations here with, remember, these are the thirteen percent, and then the two and a half and two and a half percent. And like I said, you will be seeing equally spread out seven percent across the board from JP. So the two thousand twenty three revenue increase would be three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety. Two thousand twenty four revenue increase would be three hundred and eighty two thousand, eight hundred and ninety. And the two thousand twenty five revenue increase would be four hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and ninety. The lawn bag and cart collection, the recycling, the brush collection, none of that would change. As we said, the bulky waste would change, and then the total revenue increases is listed below. And this also includes the loan payback of the five hundred thousand dollars that was given to funded from the general fund.
Thank you. What's Mr. Wang?
And I know.
Maybe you get like, maybe you're about to answer my question.
I know, Mike, that you did have a question. Jared, do we have the financial?
I don't think so.
Oh, we don't have that on? I think you do have it in your.
We all might have it in front of us.
In in the packets. But it's actually on page twenty eight in our cash flows, it shows that the three years of increased revenue, and this is for everything, it's the bulky waste plus the refuge, so it's a combination of both, equals that four hundred thousand at the bottom. So it's on our cash flow in years twenty three for four hundred thousand. Then the incremental up the next year, because it's only one point five percent, it's sixty five thousand, but this is showing cumulative, so it's four hundred thousand, again, it's the same fee that we've already raised them, and then we're going to go one and a half higher, so you then you've got four sixty five. So in your cash flow, we're showing an additional sixty five thousand. And then the following year, another one and a half, so it's sixty. So that's where you get the five twenty five. And then we just simply take, like in the last year, five twenty five minus the bulky waste, that equals the net of the four forty two. If you take a look at the total on the cash flow, the total net, total receipts from customers, it jumps from two million, five hundred and eighteen in two thousand and twenty two, if you're looking at the cash flow, and it will end at three million, oh, twenty two in twenty five. So then that percentage change, it's less, yeah.
Okay, so that meets the twenty three percent or whatever it is?
Yeah, yeah. And it's less than that, because part of that is that bulky waste fee.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's not just the user fee on the garbage, so.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Or 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 Mike, or Rod, when we bought the larger recycling carts, did we incur debt for that? And if we did, where is that debt? Is it in the recycling fee, or is it in the sanitation fee? And follow up, when does that debt drop off?
The debt, I don't mean to jump right in, but maybe you know the.
Is that the recycling?
Yes, and the debt on those carts drop off in twenty three next year.
And how much is the annual payment for that debt?
It is a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. And then we're jumping on fifty thousand annually to pay back the general fund over over a ten year period. And that's what that loan payment there is, is for the general fund loan payment starting in twenty three.
Thank you. Mr. Wang.
So you said we were paying how much a year, a hundred and thirty?
A hundred and twenty eight.
And that all came out of the recycling?
Well, it's the whole fund. I mean.
Well, yeah, but but did you guys earmark it, is that how we calculated the recycling monthly fee?
Yeah, I actually can't speak to that, Rod. We know that's prior to this.
And that's amortized, kind of that that ultimately, the loan was amortized property extent of the contract.
But we're paying it off early?
We'll we'll pay it off early, so we collected, because the description was said that we were actually, the three sixty nine is was more than what Midland was charging us for the first few years, and so we kind of took the overall total cost of the full length of the contract, plus the cost of the parts, and we look at that and set the structure up, so that's three thousand sixty nine cents for recycling the entire.
Ten year period, okay, so we we won't mess.
And no interest, so, yeah.
Right, but but then this fifty thousand dollars a year that we're paying back is for the five hundred thousand dollar infusion. I mean, and I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I mean, you look at just the bulk pickups, I mean, it's that's costing us a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars a year in the for bulk pickups. I mean, there there are some things within this fund that are resident amenities that really isn't sanitation. I mean, it is picking up garbage, but it's, and so to say the sanitation fund isn't covering itself, I I'm not sure if that's true. I mean. I mean, because if, if we pulled out these additional bonus things like bulk pickups, if we would have taken that out for the last few years and said that's a general fund cost, then this fund actually would be very solvent. Because it's, if it's, if just that amenity is a hundred and sixty-four thousand a year and it's been going on for a while, that five hundred thousand wouldn't have been needed.
I mean, that's a council decision. Typically, though, those types of costs would be included in a sanitation fund.
I, I don't disagree. I, I'm just saying philosophically, the, the idea that this thing is underwater as a sanitation service, i- if we want to add these extras, then yeah, maybe the, the general fund has to subsidize them from time to time.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron, then Mr. Schmidt.
One thing to keep in mind for the future, some of us may not be here in the future, but like the vehicle fund, our original garbage carts are reaching their extended life. And ideally, you don't want to keep grabbing five hundred or seven hundred and fifty thousand to buy new carts. It would be nice to be setting some funds along, like this money that's going to drop off, to put some of it aside to buy new carts eventually. I just wanted to throw that out.
Well, to that point, I think in any of these funds that we've talked about, and, and maybe this will come in the follow-up presentation, I urge the council to be very careful that we are balancing what we are in, going to make investments in and where we want to pull back to balance the impact on residents. I, I think it would be terrible for us to end up in a situation like Jackson, Mississippi. Now, granted, that was drinking water, but we do not need to have a crumbled infrastructure because we weren't brave enough to raise rates in a efficient and at least impactful to everybody's pocketbook manner. But it ha, we have to take care of that infrastructure and those services, so we don't want to end up like that. Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. Wend.
Yeah, I, I think there's room for debate and discussion, but I think services we provide for sanitation, even with them being amenities, I think that there still should be an expectation that is coming from what we are funding through the sanitation fund. I just, that's my take on that. I do think what we, what we need to make sure we are calibrating to is the understanding that the sanitation fee is covering those things. It is including those things. And I agree with a lot of the changes we're doing that are going to help curb some of those costs overall. I think those are smart choices we're looking at to cut back on some of that, but I wouldn't want to cut it all the way out. That said, if we wanted to look back and say, maybe we have to forgive some of this loan because we weren't thinking of it properly. I mean, that's, I guess, an argument for the current loan in place, but starts moving things out of sanitation, but I don't think it's something I'd want to look at as a long-term strategy.
Thank you. Mr. Wend.
Remind me, leaf pickup, not in the sanitation? No, so, I mean, but trees and, and brush is. And so we have made some decisions on, because is leaf pickup closer to brush pickup? Or is it closer to garbage pickup? I, I don't know, but we, but we have made and sliced some things out and some things left in. So I, I understand what you're saying, but this is not pure science. It's, there's, there's some art going into this. But, but to Alderman Waldron's point about carts, one of the, the things that we were, phase one, when we decided to go to all big recycling carts, we thought we want to increase the amount of recycling in our city, give more opportunity for that. But as Alderman Waldron, I'm sure, will remember, phase two of that idea was that we then reduce the cart sizes for some and reduce the amount of garbage that is collected in, in those. And so the idea, and what the council at the time had said is, we want to phase in a phase two in which we would have a bifurcated approach where if you had a small cart and you weren't producing as much garbage, you would have a lower rate than if you had a big cart and were producing a lot of gar, garbage and tipping fees and, and those sorts of things. Now, it wouldn't be a complete ratio because the truck has to come to both and so there's fixed costs with those sorts of things. But that is something that, from my standpoint, was direction that, that needs to be done. I think that we should continue that forward as we're talking about getting these things. Because, you know, I'll use my mom as an example. I have to go over there and I have to pull out her, her garbage bin. Now, she has one small piece of, or one bag down in the bottom and it looks, you know, but it's unwieldy for the big cart for her to, to take it out. Now, if she was able to get a smaller cart and maybe a smaller fee or something, then she would be able. I'm, I'm certain there are other residents on fixed incomes and, and those sorts of things that certainly are not producing ninety-five gallons worth of garbage each week. And I think that that should be approached and that should be a direction we give as we move forward with this, that that should be part of this process as well, to be more fair, equitable, and incentivize people to recycle more and produce less garbage.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a comment from last night's ward meeting regarding the cleanliness. And it's being a sanitation, it's something to do with the cleanliness of our city, right? And someone who works with a lot of the boats that come over, or the, the tourists that come through the, the cruise lines that then are bussed over to Moline, they're from many cities across the country and across the globe, and they're, they have commented on how clean Moline is. And so while it could be seen as an amenity, you know, an add-on bonus for being a resident of Moline, there is something to the philosophy that we want to invest in sanitation because it's going to provide dividends in another way, which is the reputation of our city, which brings in people, which brings in dollars. So just wanted to share that from last night. What's next?
The, oh, I was gonna say the last slide that I had here, but. We want to skip down to the summary because we've kind of talked about these, right? Or not?
This is, this is your, this is this slide right here.
Okay. I'm sorry, it looks like it's a different order, but it, it's the same. I, I apologize. Tony moved. This is our final summary. And what we've done is combined all four of the enterprise funds so that you can see what is the total impact on our citizens. And so for twenty-three coming up, it's a zero percent for WPC and water. And for stormwater, as we just talked about, this actually includes the, the thirty percent. And thirty percent sounds like a very large number, but when you equate it to dollars and cents, it is a dollar twelve a month for stormwater and then a dollar seventy per month for sanitation. And as I progress through the three years, the reason we're equating it now to a monthly basis is that we, with council's direction, we are ready and willing to implement the monthly utility billing effective for 2024, if council's wanting to go that direction. And that does help from a billing standpoint and the ability to pay the burden on the citizen. It makes it easier to implement these types of fees and fee increases. And I'll go through the total cost for what we project that to be for the monthly billing.
Mr. Wend.
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate if we're gonna be able to go monthly.
We're gonna do our best, yes.
What, what's changed is, is the idea of putting the reader on a sanitation truck? Is that, I mean, because that was.
The number one is we felt like it was kind of a goal and direction of the council as well as significant capital investments and requirements here in the enterprise funds. But from the finance part, and I'll, I'll let Tony address the, the reading. But we anticipate, and the word is may, we may need two people in our utility billing. And it just depends, we want to wait a year, we're not going to hire anybody until twenty-four. We want to get it all going, get it all ready to hit January first. It will be either one or two, and it may be two. The second thing is obviously our billing and postage is, is going to increase substantially. But during that year now that we have as part of that, we're going to do an all-out effort to try to get more electronic bills for people that are wanting to do it. It's not mandatory if they want to. And part of that is, is to do a better job on what we would give people if they signed up for an email, that it would be the same type of billing that they're currently receiving in the, in the mail. We do have to have some software changes, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars. And then you've got another staff person from a reading standpoint. So we anticipate our costs, if we just have one in finance, the total amount is going to be only about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar increase. Sixty percent of that typically ties back to the general fund because there's oversight with all the finance staff and, and whatnot. These dollar amounts, we did take the liberty. The monthly billing of the utility billing is already included in these rate increases that you're seeing, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wend, then Mr. Waldron.
That, that is terrific. And one thing, and this was something that Kathy Carter had told me, I think shortly before she had left, was, and so you may want to follow up with them, was, I believe she said it was Galesburg had shifted from a quarterly to a monthly. And actually, their write-offs went down quite a bit. Their accounts receivables were, were much better. And so, so actually, they wound up, while it cost them more to do, they actually made more money.
So it would be wonderful if we would break even and, yeah. Kathy, I know she did work really closely with Galesburg as well, so I'm sure, I'm sure we'll, we will come close to hitting that once we implement it. So if we take a look then across, it's all the.
Sorry, Carol.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
One more comment.
Are you going to be coming back to us with the exact cost of this billing?
Yes, when we find, when we fine-tune it, but it, we need to progress through it. Our best estimates now are between the one fifty and the two hundred thousand dollar number.
Could I suggest to the council that when we do that, we also take a look at privatizing that function? One of the things that we do, we do this all in-house. There are a number of organizations around the country that will do your monthly billing. And I'm not saying that it's better to do it in-house versus outside, but that should be something we should consider, especially in enterprise funds that work as a business. So you should al, always take a look at, can you do it cheaper somehow, rather than just defaulting to in-house? And so my inclination is in-house, always. But I would like to see in a business model, what it would cost to do it outside.
As an alternative?
Yes.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Happy, happy to do that.
Mr. Schmidt.
And, and I agree, we should take that look and see how that's going to work. But anything we'd look at, I would also want to make sure that we're going to maintain the level of customer service and flexibility. I mean, they'd still have to answer to the way we do business and not just their bottom line. Though, of course, and that's always my hesitation is because they've got a bottom line and if we're gonna be doing it monthly, it should be cheaper. But let's take the look and see.
Your honor, one more thing, and, and we don't have anything to unveil at this point, but going along the lines of what Alderman Waldron is suggesting is, is taking a look at this, this operation from a regional perspective. It's, we're in a unique position because together with our neighbors, we're all mostly on the same meter, metering and meter reading platform. And it seems like in the long run, we're going to be either doing some kind of cellular solution or a fixed network, and it just makes sense because we're all sandwiched all together, that we look at doing something together rather than being separate from one another. And so the, we're at the initial stages. Bob's authorized me to, to conduct some discussions and, and we've got no less than ten communities that are all on this network, this Neptune platform that we're on. And, and they're all interested in talking about reading, purchasing power for meters and, and utility billing.
Thank you. Mr. Mceas.
Regionalization.
Thank you, your honor. And also, if, when we roll all this out, if we were to have a strategic communications plan beyond just a press release, because there will be a ton of questions even after the fact. So the best, we cover every single question ahead of time and we're proactive on it, it'll roll out better. And even to the point of explaining the, the cost savings into long-term for individuals, because we'll get just about every question.
Community engagement from our IML sessions this last weekend.
Yes.
Again, we are targeting January first of twenty-four. We will keep you informed, you know, where we're at. Because we're also at the mercy of some of the software changes and whatnot, but that's our goal, is to shoot, to shoot for that. As we look across the page, on a monthly basis, if we look over a three-year period, that increase, and that is over, over the three years, would be fourteen dollars and thirteen cents per month or an average of about five, you know, less than five dollars a month over the average for the three years. But there are some significant increases. A lot of it is because the fees have not gone up for a long time, so we said almost like cut the tail off the dog, make it happen. And then to come back and review annually and have small incremental amounts for council to consider every single year ongoing, not waiting four, five, six, seven, eight years. One and a half to two, and then we can maybe hold it. And before, if, if, if I could, before we have JP go through the scenarios, I just wanted to give the council some assurance. I'm not going to go through all of this, but in your packets, there are financials, cash flows, fund equities for every one of the funds, listing of all the capital projects, capital equipment. It's all inclusive. And I'm just gonna highlight the four ending fund balances. If we were to implement the fee increases for WPC through years twenty-five and twenty-seven, through when the debt service starts that JP is going to be reviewing, we are hitting that minimum of the twenty-five percent fund balance. It's going to go up and down just based on the timing of when projects and capital is being spent. But when we reach that mark of when the debt starts, we're right on target at that twenty-five percent for WPC. If we look quickly at stormwater, and again, we had some higher percentages. Council talked about smoothing it. But if we were to go with the higher amounts, again, hitting in year two thousand and twenty-five, we're hitting the minimum cash balance of twenty-five percent that year. We're, we're just hitting the mark with the projects that are included in the packet. Same goes for water. With the debt dropping off, we're right at the twenty-five percent mark on, on water. And then on the sanitation, we are actually slightly low. We haven't completely made it, we're at about twenty-two percent. So we're getting those funds pretty much self-sufficient.
Okay, or more thoughts or comments before we go to JP? Do you want to bring him on? He's gonna start with sanitation because it's the easiest model. There's, there's no debt or anything. So, so once again, JP is with Mutiworth and he's, he's worked really closely with us to develop these financial models. He's gonna share his screen. We've got you muted, JP, or you're muted yourself, JP, so you'll have to share your screen if you can.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, and should I dive in?
Please do.
Yes, please do. And we were gonna start with sanitation.
Okay, first, thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting me here today. So I'm gonna go through these four models and I'm gonna show two scenarios in each. One is the original proposed scenario. And then the other scenario came out of the meeting we had a couple of days ago with the Aldermen. So some ideas came out of that meeting, so I produced a second set of scenarios. And I think the idea is that, and I hope what you experienced today is that through the process of visually seeing how, how all this financial information ties together and the ability to go through some scenarios, I hope that helps to communicate a better understanding of how your decisions can impact things. And, and hopefully, at the end of the day, this makes for a more efficient conversation amongst you all and I hope that saves you time and aggravation. So having said that, I'll, we'll start with sanitation. And what you're seeing on the screen here is the operating expenses. For the first scenario, which is the, what I call the one-year plan, so that's the idea of doing the fifteen percent increase in, in one year. And so you're seeing the operating expenses. And I can turn on the little bit of debt servicing that we talked about a moment ago. that we talked about a moment ago. And layered on top of that, I can bring in the sanitation fees, so you can see these gold bars right now are not meeting up to the height of these, of the costs. So this is what the discussion has been about, that perhaps this fund is underfunded. And so you can, and on top of that, we've got some other operating revenues. So if you add these two together, still not quite meeting up to the top here, but as you get on in the years, with that 15% increase, the combination of the sanitation fees and the other operating revenues are lined up nicely with the top of the expense layer. And if I bring out the cash position, so this is the idea of the cash for the fund, the cash that belongs to the fund, and if this, if this cash is going down, it's because you're spending more money that year than you're bringing in, and if the cash is going up, it's the other way around. And the operating threshold is this idea of the 25% of the operating expense. So if I just show you that in relation to the operating expenses, this red dotted line is at about 25%, well, it's exactly at 25% of the operating expense layer. And if we overlay the cash position, so even with the 15% increase to the sanitation fees here for 2023, is still, so that's going to help, but it's still going to be another couple of years before you're really at. So not until 2028 does the cash meet with the policy, the 25% policy. So that's the one-year plan. Now, if we look at the three-year plan, which means that instead of a 15% increase all at once in 2023, I've spread that out as three years of 7% increases. And if I bring that one in, so you could just see what happens. Let me just go back and forth between them. So with the 15% increase, the lowest that the cash gets to out here in 2025 is $580,000. And if we spread that out over three years, you know, the effect is that you're going to need to use more cash as you, as you let your rates catch up. But with this extra 7%, it rebounds, and I could probably tune the model a little bit better to stop it from overshooting here. But we just, we just put this together, and you know, kind of, you know, just had a date to do this. So, but that just, I'm not recommending three years of 7%, just letting you know that that's the dynamics of what you're dealing with here with the sanitation model. So those look like this, as opposed to the all-at-once with the one-year plan, is a little more drastic for one year, but if you spread it out, it's a little smoother. And that's all I have to say about sanitation. And I'll pause a moment in case there's some questions or comments.
Mr. Wenton.
Is this the $50,000 payback starting in 2023?
Yes.
So, because that's, I mean, it's cash flow, it's reserves, I mean, if we deferred that for three years, or four years, still eventually get it back to the, to the general fund, that, wouldn't that help that, I mean, it wouldn't fix?
Yeah, it won't fix it, but it would.
I mean, if we did it for the next four year, deferred it for four years, I mean, that'd be $200,000 over the next four years.
I mean, it can be done. It's just a matter of the impact.
I mean.
We're looking total on the general fund. Yep.
Right, it'd be down the road. I mean, we're, I mean, we're sitting with cash reserves that are okay. So I, to Alderman Waldron's point, to put together a system that would smooth this, I would much, much, much prefer that than, than a 15% pop in one year.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, and I, I think overall, there's going to be places we're going to have to keep up if there's an easy move to save ourselves a little bit, or smooth it out, because we are definitely having to get that rate increase, but doing it slower, it seems like an easier opportunity. When we're, when we're choosing something that is not going to negatively impact another plan, and that's, I guess, the question of, will that, what will that negatively impact?
I, I did do a rough calculation if we smoothed it on the 7, 7, and 7, and it kind of goes up and down, kind of stabilizing. This included the $50,000 starting with the general fund in '23, and it did draw the fund balance in the sanitation down between 12 and then 15% in '23 and '24. So if you don't do the 50, you know, maybe you're looking at 13 and 16. That $50,000 doesn't have a huge impact, but I mean, it's, it would be helpful, so.
Mr. Wenton.
But I'm talking about for the cash reserves. I mean, if, if there is the concern, because we're trying to get to the, to the red line. I mean, that, that's ultimately what we're, what our policy is.
Well, when I'm, sorry, maybe I'm not making myself clear. When I'm saying 12 and 15, that is the net reserves to expenditures. So instead of being at our 25%, if we smoothed it at a 7 across the board, our reserves, we'd be dipping down in the 12% versus 25.
But what I'm saying is that we wouldn't be paying the $50,000, so that's $200,000 over that, over that four, that four-year period.
That's what I'm saying. It's going to move it a little. I'd have to calculate it, but it's not going to, it will be helpful. It won't fix it, but yes.
And JP's given you an approximation there, kind of on the fly here, as he is simulating how that, what it looks like when that's deferred, and what kind of rate increases you could see or be reduced to if you decided to defer that.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron.
Alderman Wenton, you're talking about potentially not paying back the general fund?
Well, just pushing it out for four, four years, so it would be, it would get paid back, it just wouldn't.
Well, I'm toying with the idea and consideration of not paying it back.
Oh, at all?
It would smooth things out, you wouldn't need it. The general fund right now is in a healthy position by all accounts. If you do forgivable loans all the time, you don't pay them back, and I'm thinking about all the rates that we're talking about, your stormwater, sewer, sanitation. If you forgave that portion of sanitation, wrote it off, so to speak, it would have an impact overall to the citizens. It may not be a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, it may not, it may be worth the consideration.
What you're saying, it sounds like, is it's part of the balanced approach.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, what's next?
Okay, if it's back to me, I can move on to the next model.
Yes, please.
So let's look at Storm. It's the next simplest one. And here, I have two scenarios again, and the difference between them is the how much spending you do on capital moving forward. So in the scenario one, the spending is at about $800,000 a year. It's kind of climbing to that, starting around 2024, 25, and so on. So this is $800,000 a year of project work for Storm compared to only 400. So the scale of my model here changed on you, so it looks like it's just as high, but here, we're at about $400,000. And if I bump to here, we're at $800,000 over here. So that's the key difference between the spending, and that's the only difference between the spending in these two models. And if we look at the proposed model, the, the rate increase is proposed, so of course, we've got the operating expenses in there as well, and we also have our 25% reserve target down here. And I think we may have a few other, a few other revenues, but not really anything too much here, so I'll just turn those off. And so the idea being that if you do want to ramp up to $800,000, the green layer here again, then you do need to increase rates to get up to that level to kind of, so that your storm rates are able to cover both the operating and the capital. And if this is done this way, the cash position has this trajectory. So here you are in 2022 with a fair bit of cash that would come down as the rates are being, you know, as rates rise to take up the shortfall in funding, just in time to kind of skate along the red dotted line here. Of course, we'd have to tune a few things in the future to bring this down a little bit. That gives you an idea of what happens with the two 30% rate increases. So you can see how the gold bars here are rising sharply in, in order to rescue this dropping cash line, right in time to kind of stay above the red dotted line. So that's.
I may make a point, part of the reason the cash is spiking there, you'll see a big spike, is because in last year's audit for 2021 audited year, we only spent $62,000 in projects. And it is now coming forward in '22 that we're rapidly going through those expenditures. And every one of these funds, I mean, we can go along that dotted line all we want, but there's always going to be that timing and shuffling. It's, yeah, just kind of try and find, but that is the big steep one, was we only had $62,000 in projects.
Mr. Wenton.
When we did this presentation on Friday, we had both the cash, cash position target and the operating threshold, and these seem to be, as proposed, were running close to the cash position target, which was much higher. Did we change what the operating threshold was at all, or?
Yes, this is changed from what was shown the other day. We, we tuned these models to match the, the financial, the reserve policy, which is 25%, and that's, that's really what you're seeing now. What we, what we presented the other day was more consistent with the industry standard, which is to have a replacement or a capital reserve as well. And there was an additional black line that was represented there. But out of respect for the, the financial policies of the city, we were showing you the, the reserve policy that's in place.
And I appreciate that, and maybe when we get to water and WPC, I thought for most of these, we were running higher on the proposed increase, rate increases, that they weren't following the red, but now they are. So I was just, did we change?
I think for the most part, I think what you're, you were recognizing from the other day was that they were rising out in future years. So we've tuned, tuned future rate increases down.
Yeah. There were, it used to be much, the numbers in years like five onward used to be higher, and now those.
Okay, so if that's, without having.
The first five years was the same.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, so I can confirm that, Alderman Wenton, that you're quite right. We did bring down those numbers, and we took the black line out, because it made for a simpler conversation today.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so that's, that's scenario one, which, as you point out, is not quite exactly as was proposed earlier, so it does have that change to it. But it's similar in the, in the sense of the spending. So let's go to scenario two. So now we brought the spending on capital down, and we're still keeping the black line down close to the red. And the effect of this, so if you're spending less, then it means you need to raise rates less, and the effect there is, that's where we have the 22%, I think in one year. I'll just go have a quick look here. 22 and 7 instead of 230s. Okay, so let's just look at that again. So here, you've got this picture with the, with the half the spending that was proposed, and with this, you, this is being held together with a 22% for this coming year, followed by a 10%? Did I say 10 or 7? I'm sorry.
Seven.
22 and 7. So 22 and 7 gets you, gets you $400 a year of capital spending and maintaining of your cash at the threshold, whereas if I skip over this one, 230s lands you the same place with your cash, lets you spend twice as much on projects. And there could be a number of other combinations of numbers that we could play with that spreads the increases over time. If you want to ramp up your spending, instead of ramping up to 800 all at once, you could, you know, ramp up the spending a little less aggressively over several years, and, and the rates would have, would follow less aggressively as well.
Thank you.
Drinking water?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Didn't see your hand. Thank you, Mr. Waldron.
This is probably for Director Dryer more than anybody else. If we ramp up projects in stormwater, do you have the workload capability to take on extra stormwater projects in-house for design?
We're going to fill one of our design positions. I think if we were to secure that, we may be able to do that. But we're having difficulty filling that position, so challenging right now.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Wenton.
That's one of my big concerns, and that's why I think a more gradual run-up to this. I mean, we've got tons of projects that bleed year after year, that don't get done and everything. And until we get kind of a, a track record of being able to do it, and appreciate that, you know, we can increase to our capacity, but to basically just take this money from the residents, stock it away, and then we aren't able to spend it, or don't, aren't able to do the, the projects, I don't think that that's in anybody's interest. And again, I want to reiterate that, you know, you've got a couple of $100,000 expenses in here, because we haven't figured out or enforced our ordinances as they are. And so those things need to get cleaned up before I'm ready to, to raise rates on our residents.
Next.
Okay, move on to drinking water, JP.
All right, so let's start with the original proposal, which in this case, I'll point out that where the black line actually is, I've removed the black dotted line that accompanied it, but we've left this as is to, just to impart the idea that with the utilities such as water and wastewater, maintaining a certain level of capital reserve is something to consider. So we've left that this way in the first scenario, but let's break this one down. It's a little more complicated than the other ones. So we've got, we've got operating expenses, we've got some purchased water costs up here, we've got the current debt servicing, which is this blue layer over here on the left. And if I just zoom in on that, so it looks like about $1.8 million, not for long, coming down, looks like it's going to be paid off by 2024. And if we bring into that the capital improvements, so here, we've got a number of things going on, a list of projects, but this gives you an idea of the costs of them. So it looks like it's, on average, at about the 1.5 million annual cost. There's a coming down here of sorts, but, so that gives you an idea of the costs, the total revenue requirements for the water system, all of these layers combined together like this. So now let's bring in some revenues, and generally, it's just going to be the rates. I think there's probably a number of these other, small other operating revenues and non-operating revenues and so on. And I think some of this is the transfers for the ARPA, ARPA fund. And so if you look at the cash position now, which again, is just a simple arithmetic difference between cash in and cash out, in relation to the operating threshold, this is what's going on in this first scenario, so we are dipping below the line by about $1 million. And that's being all held together with, with not much going on for a couple of years. I think there's a 7% increase in, in 2025, followed by not many increases at all for a long time till 2030, and then it's really just kind of keeping up with inflation at that point. So let's just look at that again here. So this, think of this scenario as, in, in one year, in like, in 2025, an increase of 7% gets you not just the minimum required by your current policy, but also lets you build a cash reserve, a capital reserve in addition to that, and you get all your projects done. Okay, and that's with a 7% increase a couple of years from now. Let's look at a second scenario, which is, oh, and by the way, in the meeting a couple days ago, it was suggested that maybe the fact that this cash is dipping below by $1 million, there was the mention of a TIF transfer that could take care of that, $1 million of TIF transfer, and that's, that's happening in this next scenario. So this scenario here is fixing that dip down with the $1 million TIF transfer, and we did the, also did the thing where we're just keeping the cash at the red line, so there's no capital reserve in this example. And this is being held together with pretty much no rate increases. I added a half a percent just to really just keep, I got a little bit, my obsessive-compulsive disorder, didn't like. my obsessive compulsive disorder didn't like the fact that it was dipping below the line a little bit, and it still is. But that's what we're seeing here. So in other words, if you can bring that TIF money in and not be concerned about a capital reserve, then you can do that without any increases to rates as things are now. I mean, things change in the future, of course, but as things, based on assumptions that we have in there now, that's that scenario. And the third one, do I have a third one? This is, okay, so this is looking at things where you don't have the TIF fund. And I do, and you have the capital reserve. And this is looking at, you know, maybe a 3% increase, followed by some twos. This maybe, this doesn't have, I think this one does not have the TIF transfer.
Yes, that third scenario, JP, has the no TIF transfer, but it lowers the reserve threshold to 25%.
That's right. So if I compare S1, scenario one, with scenario three, it does bring it down to about half of what it was before.
And so the result is, instead of a 7% increase, it would be a 3% increase.
Okay.
In 2025.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Walden.
Do these revenue projections for sale of water include Silvis at some point?
Yes.
What year?
Immediately.
Immediately.
And additional revenue anticipated from Deere and Company, about that way.
Do you think that the IEPA will be, will have approval by then?
Yes, the construction is actually going to start, or proposed to start on Monday. And now there could be some concurrent water quality testing that could happen. Their situation over there is categorized as emergency. So they're allowing this to move forward because of, you know, they're on an emergency interconnection.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Wen?
Yeah, so the idea of the million dollars, just so everybody kind of knows, so there is a revenue anticipation note out there of a million dollars that TIF 7, 7? 7 owes water. And the idea that I would say is, let's just transfer that back to general fund. The general fund would transfer that million dollars over here. It would be a wash and we wouldn't have to increase rates. We'll look at it each year, and if it needs it, then we'll do it. But to do that just accounting move and not raise rates on our residents seems like the right thing to do. And so, you know, down the road, if the TIF winds up doing well, which we're anticipating, I can't wait for that. But it'll wind up washing out anyway, but it'll prevent us from having to raise rates now on our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, and Mr. Walden.
Carol, what's the risk with that? Is that if the TIF does not come to fruition, then that burden goes on to the general fund? But that's currently a burden we've placed on the water fund instead of on the general fund?
Well, well.
Well, we've anticipated it's going to be paid back, yeah.
It was originally in the general fund, then we actually switched it over to this fund. And so. Based on what reserves were available? What reserves were available at the time. And so now the reserves are available there and we can prevent a rate increase. I think that that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Walden.
Tony, is your capital program, Wal, still around an aggressive approach to getting the red water?
Yes, however, I will say the capital improvement plan we presented you last week does not include some reductions to red water spending in '23 and '24, just to make our cash flows work.
Once the debt drops off, this get better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Wen, and then Mr. Schmidt.
And then we haven't had any additional red water.
Still.
But no, I can believe it, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Schmidt.
Do we, does this account already for anticipated costs with lead line replacements? Or is that something that's going to be a continued and increasing cost?
Yes, there is some additional capital spending. You can see how that ramps up there in '26, I believe. That's that $500,000. It still remains to be seen how much money is going to flow in from the feds into, through the state revolving loan fund.
Thank you. That concludes your presentation. No?
No, Your Honor, we still have the wastewater.
Oh, we still have one more? I missed it. Okay, guys.
JP, move through wastewater, please, quickly.
That one's the main feature. Yeah, okay. So you folks are all pros at interpreting this now, so I'm going to try to be as quick as I can here. I'm going to go to the original proposal, which again, thinking of Alderman Wen's comment earlier, you'll see this black line is still above the red one. It's suggesting a capital reserve. So in this case, let's look at the story here. So we've got big projects coming up. So this is the South Slope plant. And to fund that, we are proposing, there's some borrowing that's going to come in to help fund that. And that is going to, so first of all, you've got current debt on the books, so about two and a half, a little bit over two and a half million dollars of debt that you're paying down now for the North Slope plant. And with the additional borrowing for the South Slope, that's going to bring in some new debt. So by 2028, once you've converted your SRF funding into long-term debt, you're going to be about 4.3 million on top of the 2.6. So lots of debt servicing around that timeframe. And the operating expenses are here with the 25% threshold, 25% of your operating expenses of the red line again. So if I pull all that together into one picture, these are your revenue requirements, so all of the expenditures. So let's look at revenues coming in. So we've got the sale, so these are sale of service revenues from inside Moline customers. And we've got the wholesale customers as a separate layer here, so the little brown that's on top. And I zoom in on that. And you can see that in order to balance the model, so let's think of the cash again in relation to the threshold. In order to prevent this from dropping below the red, we've got some rate increases here that are coming in to correct for that and to build the cash up again to, I think what Tony would consider a comfortable level, to make sure that, you know, given the uncertainties that might come along with how these projects can, the costs of them can change on you as things go on. I think the idea was to, better to keep a little more cash around than to, than the opposite, and then find yourselves in trouble. So that's just the way the model was put together. And again, in this case, we've got, we've left some in the out years here for a capital reserve. So that's first scenario. And if I go to a different one, so in response to the meeting we had on Friday, we've brought that cash position down in these out years so that it lands right at the red line. Meanwhile, we've still left the sort of the building up the cash in the meantime. So this is the picture that you see here. I don't know if there's much more to tell about this story, oh, except for the increases. So if we come in here, so this is all being done with, starting with next year, a 25% increase to wholesale. And then in 2024, another 25% increase to wholesale. And by wholesale, I mean East Moline and Coal Valley. And also a 9% increase to inside customers, followed by two nines. And then in order to bring this cash position down in the out years, I've changed the fours that were in there originally. So if I just go back to, so this was the original proposal with a pair of fours for '26 and '27. And I've been able to do away with those in the, bring those down to twos, which just, you know, and leaving everything else as it was. And then this brings you into a landing here at the red line in the out years. I'll just pause there, Tony, just, and there's some cost of service analysis involved with this, which I don't know if you feel that it's important that I get into that. I know it's getting quite late already, so I'll leave it to you to judge that. But I'm happy to answer questions at this point.
I think we're going to pass on the cost of service analysis, at least for today. But there may be questions.
Yes, Mr. Walden.
I was just trying to wrap it up. Going back to your original recommendation, you were looking for us from, to increase the wholesale rate?
We have an obligation through our IGA to give the wholesalers, East Moline and Coal Valley, a notification of 30 days. And so, you know, we'd like to bring something back to you for approval, you know, with that 25%. That's really what we're recommending at this point.
I think we'd like to do that in October as well, so they can play for for budgeting purposes.
I'm for that.
I see it, pretty much a consensus here.
We've been subsidizing it for quite some time.
Okay.
There you have it.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, oh, Mr. Wen has a question.
I would like to see a little bit more smoothing for the internal rates. I know that nine to front-load it, and it jacks up and then it goes, increases of twos. You know, if we could bring that nine down and maybe those twos turn to threes or fours to smooth that out a little bit, so it's not quite as if they go to jump early.
Which I think is something we did when we did the water plant. We smoothed them out, even though we needed more money upfront. I think that's what we did with the water plant.
Yeah, I think that that's the appropriate.
We'll look forward to that update.
Sounds good. Your Honor, could I also get some head nods regarding the outside retail? We're looking to, we're providing a recommendation to raise them to 200% of the outside rate, or the inside rate.
See thumbs up.
I'm sorry.
Reminder that those are those.
Can you give me the long version of that with the explainer?
So those are those customers that are outside city limits, but receiving city water or sewer service. Currently, the codified rate for water is 200%. And the current rate for wastewater is 110%.
So we want to bring the codified in line, so they're both 200%?
Yes, and we believe that that would also help incentivize those individuals to become annexed, which you'll hear about next week.
Thank you. Mr. Walden.
For my own benefit, many years ago, one of the reasons why we didn't touch these is because we had a legal opinion at the time that we needed to make sure that all the outside customers were getting charged what it was costing us. We just couldn't grab a random number and say, we're going to nail it to 500%. And so we were very conscious to make sure that we could justify that number. We didn't feel good about justifying it. That's one of the reasons why they left it alone. So for my own benefit, do you feel good that we are able to justify the 200% if we had to wind up in court on the water side and then obviously bringing up the wastewater side, 200?
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Okay, there you have it, Charlie.
I like it, definitive.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, JP.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. We'll look forward to the follow-up. So we move to 8.2, growth area, yes, right? Growth areas south of the Rock River. Mr. Vito.
Well, well done, guys.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Carol, always good.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. I will try to go through this rather quickly as we're already at a pretty late hour here. But this is a very, very important topic. This really is a discussion about the future of the growth of the city. And so I put together a memo kind of outlining introduction and then just the very long history of planning efforts south of the Rock River. So we'll kind of summarize that a little bit and then just sort of open it up for discussion among the council this evening. So really, first question, really, the only question here is, why? Why are we looking at developments south of the Rock River? I loved this headline that was actually all the way back in 2001 Quad Cities Times article. And it basically just stated that the city of Moline is full. So that was in 2001, so 21 years ago, there was a recognition that pretty much land, the city north of the river was pretty much developed out. And that has continued. You look at residential development within the city, residential development is generally going to be infill lots. You see, our developers have done a good job trying to find areas to put housing, but really, there is just no additional room for housing. There's very little additional room for commercial development, pretty much north of the Rock River. So again, you know, new residential units are going to equal an increase in population. City of Moline is a very, very slow-growing community. If you look at our census numbers, we can debate if those are accurate or not, but we're basically at flat growth. Flat growth, we're very fortunate with Carol's team that they've been, and with this council, have done a great job of making sure that, you know, we do well fiscally, but it's difficult to continue to have high level of service that our residents expect if we're not growing. And so we need to figure out how do we grow? And then, you know, proximity to the airport, the freeway system, I mean, this really is a wonderfully located part of the community with a lot of amenities for both new industrial, new commercial, as well as new residential. So we're going to, we're going to go back in the Wayback Machine all the way to almost 30 years ago. You know, if this plan was a person, they would have started, married and started a family by now. But 1995, the Moline South Plan, this was really the first plan to examine development opportunities in the area south of the Rock River. It was a very rudimentary plan. It focused mostly on population projections over the next 25 years. So this plan is actually already out of date. Basically said that new residential would be needed and provided a general area of where residential development could be located. Fast forward to the 2001 Comprehensive Plan. This was an update to the 1966 Comprehensive Plan. So again, we are also needing to do a new Comprehensive Plan, but we're not quite as outdated as we were in 2001. This addressed again that the city was nearly out of developable land north of the Rock River, that future development would need to be considered south. It adopted what was called the South Rock Planning District. And I've got a picture of that on the next slide. Again, it was a fairly simplistic plan. It just said that, you know, we, future land use would be predominantly no load residential, low-density residential with some commercial near the airport, neighborhood serving, commercial with school and park site nodes at major intersections. And kind of just lines drawn on the map of where future roads could go. So you'll see here, I mean, it really, the road system here doesn't follow the apogamy very well. It's, again, it's a very rudimentary kind of simple plan. All that white area is low-density residential. You see some commercial, some industrial, park land kind of near the Indian Bluff Golf Course. Those stars are future schools and park areas. So again, not a ton of real, you know, it really was two pages in a 250-page cop plan. So not a ton, but it was, it was an idea that, yes, we need to look south of the river. Fast forward to 2009, this was right in the middle of the downturn of recession. So no surprise, nothing really happened here. But we did have a private developer that came to the city with a master plan. They wanted to do mixed use with retail and office, business park. They were looking into environmentally sustainable, lead-certified project. There was envisioned to be a TIF district and some financing bonds in partnership with the city, Quad Cities International Airport, Rock Island County. Obviously, it went nowhere. And that is no surprise again because of the economy at the time.
But we did extend utilities, the case.
We did, we did, we did do that. Yes, indeed. So 2011, I think, was kind of an offshoot of this. And so that was TIF 7, it was created, 134-acre site southwest of the airport, 19 parcels. It's a mix of heavy industrial or I-2 zoning district and office and research, park zoning. These are shovel-ready sites, there's utilities to them. And CED and administration is working very closely on marketing the site for potential development. And we should have some more, hopefully, news on that, rather shortly on that. So Bob has been working very closely on getting, hopefully, some sites finally out there and we can get, see that TIF hopefully be in to bring some funds in. So 2013, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this because this was actually a really excellent plan. This was a 120-page plan. It was 6,000 acres that went from the Rock River all the way down to 120th Avenue, went basically from Myland to Coal Valley. This was land use plan that identified different land uses and densities. It created a concept of what were called character areas, the basically different areas within the plan area would be developed and designed in different ways. It even had. It even had basic design guidelines. That being said, it is an almost ten-year-old plan. It was very heavy on office, it was very heavy on what was called flex space. And it was very heavy on kind of light density, low-density residential. Staff thinks that, again, this is a good plan, but I think it does need to be updated through the lens of development pattern changes post-COVID. Office was, again, very heavy in that plan. We all know what's happening in the office market. You know, it's, it's, it's coming back, but I don't think it will ever be to pre-COVID levels. So I think there needs to be an examination of kind of what, what can go down in that area. But I'll give you just kind of a little bit of a guideline. Again, this was about a hundred-and-twenty-page plan. You see all those different colors there. Again, it was, it was very well thought out, lots of different types of land uses. And then here's the actual, you know, kind of future concept plan for the area. So you see a mix of, you know, understanding the topography in the area. You know, looking at kind of these different potential nodes, looking at actually where the street network could actually go. So again, it was, it was a well-thought-out plan, understanding the topography of the area, understanding, you know, kind of even property ownership and things like that. So staff would recommend that, you know, that we at some point revisit this plan and probably update it and, and actually get it off the shelf and get it to start implementing. So kind of some of the challenges for development, I've mentioned topography several times. You know, this is a unique area, you know, unlike Bettendorf and Davenport, we don't have just flat land where we can just go endlessly. You know, Davenport, Bettendorf, they pretty much can go north, you know, I joke really until they get to the Wisconsin border. It's not quite that far, but they can go a long way. There's just, it's flat farm fields, and that's what you're seeing. If you look at the maps, there's not a ton of, new roads are being built, but they've been very aggressive at kind of, you know, the future-proofing in their, their area. With that is, you know, challenges with utilities and roadway infrastructure. That's tied very closely to pop, to topography. Again, because this isn't flat, we can't just run pipes and, and streets. You know, we are going to have to have some more expensive infrastructure. We're going to have to have lift stations, we're going to have to have water towers. We have a water tower that's at the very far south, I guess that'd be west part of this area. Kind of more south-central, southeast part of, of the area. And so, so there was some understanding that, yes, in the future, you know, we would be developing down there. The airport, while it's definitely a catalyst for development, it is a challenge, you know, with the air traffic that's coming in there. You know, there's going to be limitations on height, heights around the building or around the airport, things like that. Airport's an excellent partner, you know, I think they want to see their, the property that they own around the airport also develop in some way. So I, it's a challenge, but it's certainly an unmeetable challenge. And then finally, our current development ordinances. You know, if somebody came in today and wanted to do a new development down in that area, staff would have some difficulty in trying to kind of figure out how to direct and give some, give a developer some guidance. We have a PUD ordinance, it's very convoluted, it's rather difficult to kind of, it's difficult for staff to follow. It would be even more difficult, I think, for an applicant to, to follow. So, you know, I think we definitely want to look at streamlining our PUD ordinance. And then our subdivision regulations. So the subdivision regulations were repealed in, sorry, chapter twenty-nine, which is where the subdivision regulations, they were repealed in two thousand and fifteen. The idea was to move a lot of these to a combination of the zoning ordinance and then also some of our, like our, our streets ordinance and things like that. As part of that was going to be to create kind of a, a design manual. I have found where there was a draft of a design manual, but it was never actually implemented. So again, one of these things of where, I think we have some low-hanging fruit that we can, you know, pick up rather quickly and, and move, move the ball forward on this. And so that's a very, very quick, and I think that was my last, oh, no, sorry. And then here's just kind of the area that we're talking about. So there's a lot of lines here, this was put together by, by Tony and his team. So you see in purple, that is where the city of Mylan is, the yellow is the city of Coal Valley. The red line there is our annexation boundary agreement with Mylan. The yellow is our annexation boundary with Coal Valley. We are in discussions with both of those communities as both of those annexation agreements have either expired or, or in the process of being, needing to be renewed. So, you know, I think there will be some discussions, you know, we've got kind of a strange, strange job there around Coal Valley. And so I think there's some discussion on, on, you know, do we straighten that out? And I know we've had that discussion with the village and we'll continue to, continue, continue to have that conversation with them. Blue properties are the city of Moline. You can see we have kind of some, some enclaves, including the Turner Farm. That sits right there within Coal Valley's boundaries. And then the purple line is the Moline School District Boundary, just so everyone is kind of aware of the lay of the land there. So really, we're talking everything from, again, Mylan to Coal Valley and the Rock River, with obviously the exception of the airport, down to about the school district boundary. So just to kind of give an idea, it's a large area. It's about almost ten square miles, the city itself is, I believe, eighteen square miles. So we're talking almost, almost doubling the size of the city if at some point we actually went through and exercised our, our, our rights with the annexation agreements. One of the, the final things I will say is that staff, with the assistance of Tony's team, we are looking at areas that obviously already have utilities that are not within the city. We're working with them to bring those in, bring them into the city. And then also those properties that are kind of surrounded by the city but may not have utilities, but under state law that we, we have the ability that we can annex them. So we will be continuing to, to look at those annexation opportunities to bring those properties into the city. And then I believe as part of this, you know, we would recommend looking at, you know, probably a pretty comprehensive annexation plan of kind of where do we go? How do we, how do we ensure that we are bringing those properties into the city in a methodical manner? So that we're not just bringing them all in at once and have to serve them all suddenly. So we want to make sure that we're, we're being methodical in that. So with that, I will be happy to stop for any questions or discussion that the group may have.
Mr. Schmidt.
Hey, one more training wheels question. Could you explain a little bit more of what we'd be looking at implementing with subdivision ordinance?
Yeah, so most subdivision ordinances, you have obviously, you know, your, your requirements of, you know, that, how your lots are laid out and things along that, those lines. But the subdivision ordinance also typically has a lot of design standards. How wide your streets have to be, how long your blocks can be, those type of things. What we'd like to do is, is kind of pull a lot of that stuff out and create a design manual. And that's an overarching thing we'd like to do even with our zoning ordinance. Again, those are sort of things that, it's a lot easier, you know, someone can get in the weeds with the ordinance, but a design manual makes it a lot easier for a developer to be able to pick something up and be able to know what the city expects of, of development. So pulling a lot of, a lot of those things out and putting them into something that's a little bit more easy for someone to use, you're probably looking at doing more illustrations, things like that. Again, to really kind of get away from the very heavy legalese, very text-heavy that our ordinances are and trying to make them, modernize them and make them a little bit easier for the development community to, to follow and understand.
So this is applying to residential as well as other developments?
Yep, yeah, so it would be, so the subdivision ordinance would cover any subdivision, residential, commercial, industrial, any, any division of land within the city does have to follow our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Be more similar to a form-based code that we're working on presently for downtown.
That's a well.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Went.
I appreciate this, and it's a conversation that I'm glad we're restarting again. Obviously, infill in Moline is the least expensive, we're talking about growth and, and those sorts of things. So I don't want to lose track of that because this development is going to be expensive. I mean, you know, putting new roads in, all of those things. And depending on how we do it, you know, most studies show that if you're just doing residential, the cost of putting in a brand-new street and sewer and all that kind of stuff, you can't tax them enough to replace that thing over time without the rest of the city then subsidizing it. And we're running into that whole thing. So I, I appreciate it and, but I want to make sure we're doing this in a methodical, smart way because the other portion, I think we kind of touched on it maybe the last time we were in the other room, is we need to get our ducks in line for if we're going to start doing this, fire protection. I mean, you know, do you go out and you build a fire station for fifteen houses and have to staff it and, and those sorts of things? Or what makes a lot more sense is having an agreement with fire protection districts that are already out there to say, hey, yeah, you're going to annex in, but as part of that annexation, you're not going to get the full coverage until we hit a threshold or whatever. And then maybe we'll put out a, a station out here. Same with police coverage and, and those sorts of things. It, you know, over on the other side of the river, jumping Duck Creek is nothing at all. Jumping across to the other side of the airport is, is a completely different approach. So while I'm all in favor of this and, and making sure that we can figure out how this development is done, growth and development just for growth and development's sake is not always the smart and fiscal thing to do for the, the rest of the community. So.
No, I, I would agree wholeheartedly. There, there is a long history in the urban planning world of communities that developed way too quickly. And they are now having to figure out how in the world do they service those, the roads twenty-five, thirty years later? How in the world do they plow those streets and pick up that garbage? And, you know, I, that, that's my concern when you see some of the development within this region is just this kind of unending growth further and further away from their, their urban core. And so, yes, I believe, you know, I know that's, I'm glad to hear that the council's concerned about that because, you know, as, as a planner, as an economic development professional, that's something we need to be very cognizant of. You know, growth for growth's sake is, is not necessarily, not going to be the panacea that we think it will be, so.
Smart growth with a purpose.
Absolutely.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'll summarize it.
Yeah, one other concern as we move forward is that we are not putting ourselves in a position where we are going to be aggressively, forcibly annexing in places where it's not warranted. I think that there are a lot of people who, for reasons that may make sense to us, why they would choose not to be part of, of the city of Moline. I think that is something we need to be aware of as we're making those choices. And I know we talk, you know, when we're surrounding or moving into things, I just think going slowly and respectfully is going to be super important. And I know that's one thing that I tend to get a lot of calls on because people from outside don't have an alderman, so they call me instead. But I just, I think it's something that, and I think I, it's been my experience that we have proceeded in that fashion. I just want to make sure we continue to do so.
I wanted to say, I think this conversation's been broached, but, you know, a part of the methodical process here is also being in close conversation with the school district because of the needs, you know, that this would create. So I'm glad to know that that's already started, but also because they've already completed a facility study, you know, that's, I think, a ten-year plan kind of thing, so.
It will, it will be a very collaborative conversation with not just the school district, but also with our.
All the taxing bodies.
Taxing bodies as well as our, our industrial, you know, especially John Deere, you know, that they, they are trying to figure out ways to bring people into the community. And so what type of housing are they going to need? You know, same with the rest of our employers, what type of housing do they feel that their employee, that their employees need? So again, this is, you know, as much as, you know, I kind of, kind of joke a little bit that this has been going on for a while, I think in a way that means that we, we have some time to make sure we do this right because this really is the last large area that the city is going to be able to develop. And so I think we want to make sure we do it right, so.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Yeah, those are all great comments. I would also say there's development in other areas of Henry County that I'm seeing too. So people do like those kind of new developments with more land. So I just also want to put it out there that we also really have to be aware who else is doing this kind of stuff. And are they fulfilling the housing needs? Maybe they can't keep up and we need to step up. Just one of those things that I want to throw out there.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our roundtable discussions. We move to our consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council on Executive Session Minutes of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-four Water and Sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section thirty-four dash eleven hundred, grounds for termination, section thirty-four dash twenty-one oh three, service taps, section thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-one, charges and collections. Section thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-six, deposit for test of meter. Section thirty-four dash thirty-four oh two, pretreatment of wastewater. Section thirty-four dash thirty-four oh three, environmental remediation wastewater. And section thirty-four dash thirty-four fourteen, pretreatment charges and fees. By repealing said sections in their entirety and acting in lieu thereof, new sections thirty-four eleven hundred, thirty-four twenty-one oh three, twenty-one twenty-one, twenty-one twenty-six, thirty-four oh two, thirty-four oh three, and thirty-four fourteen, dealing with the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four Personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for right-of-way utility technician. Council Bill thirty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance designating the Skelly Gas Station located at eight-twenty Fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, as a locally designated landmark. Council Bill thirty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five Zoning and Land Development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated as section thirty-five dash thirty-one oh three, one fifty-one nineteenth Avenue. Council Bill thirty twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter eleven, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section eleven dash eleven oh one, local amendments to fire code, section eleven dash eleven oh one point one, fees, and section eleven dash twenty-one sixteen, same fees. By adding amendments to reflect the new fee structure as a result of the two thousand and twenty-two fee review effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven sixty-three dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest-to-task order number twenty-two dash zero three, with Strand Associates Incorporated, for engineering services related to design, implementation, oversight, and integration of SCADA and cybersecurity improvements at the water treatment plant in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand. Council Bill eleven sixty-four dash twenty twenty-two, resolution approving an honorary street designation in honor of David B. Spears and authorizing the director of Public Works to effectuate the fabrication and installation of the honorary street sign.
Move to approve consent?
Second, Schmidt.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderman Walden.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
I neglected public comment at the beginning, so I'm glad, I missed that and we didn't catch it. So I want to make sure to not forget that now. But miscellaneous business, Alderman, Macias, and I attended the Illinois Municipal League this weekend. There were quite a few good sessions related to the diversity, equity, and inclusion and things related to the equity plan that I've brought up before. So I'm excited to share that with, with staff and see where that goes. There was an awful lot, as I mentioned last week, or there were an awful lot of things happening in the city this week from the porch party at the Dear Wyman House and Belgian Fest that you all mentioned last week. And I hope you were able to attend and see the amount of people enjoying Moline. That is all I have tonight. Mr. Williams.
Just spoke to a couple of the board members of the, for the Belgian Fest and said it's the largest they've ever had, the most attended. The shirts that people initially didn't like, they sold out of them and couldn't keep them, so it was, it was a great success.
Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just Illinois Municipal League Conference, this year it was very informative, a lot of quality sessions and speakers. And I also got to spend some time with our neighbors too. So it's about building those relationships, learning from them. And also our friends in Silver spoke very highly of working with you, Tony. They love you and they love the way you've worked with them, so I just wanted to let everybody. So I just wanted to let everybody know that you're representing the city very well. Thank you.
Mr. Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to mention the pickleball tournament was really great and thank you for the standing and doing the great introduction. It was wonderful.
Thank you. Yes.
Anyway, it was, it was really great. They suffered some weather setbacks and they worked their way through them pretty well. And it was a great tournament, huge, huge crowd.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right.
Your Honor.
Is there any, yes, we do have staff comments.
So I can't pass this opportunity because I've got Greg Piles here today and he normally doesn't come to the meetings, but his face is getting red now because I'm putting him on the spot. But we were, we were recently issued, the last Stats and Information Report indicated to you that the, the permit, the NPDS permit for North Slope was still kind of in limbo. And we've recently been issued that permit or it's in the process of being formally issued and, and Greg's persistence with regard to a requirement called a NUC, a Nutrient Assessment Reduction Plan, and having that removed from the draft permit, he was successful in that endeavor. And I wanted to just give him kudos here with all of you present because that persistence is going to result in the savings to the WPC utility on the order of around $30,000 to $50,000 in consulting fees. So thank you, Greg. Please join us at the water treatment plant on Friday. Mayor Ryan Putty is going to do a proclamation for Social Water Protection Week. So thank you. That's 1 o'clock on Friday.
Yep, thank you. Is there public comment this evening? Hearing none, we need a motion for executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in executive sessions a purpose discussion of property acquisition, 5 ILCS 120/2C5.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
Moving to closed session.